All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, March 22nd, and this is a regular board meeting. And everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the role reflect that all members are present excluding Jeff Redmond. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yeah, I guess it was. As a reminder, it's being recorded.
Welcome to all of our visitors. Is there any public comment at this time?
Just moving my play app for a moment. Later on tonight, hopefully you're approving my wife going from point five to one full-time, and I want to back up in history a little bit as a 13 years ago, almost to this day, she approached the board and I was in the same position, so you would call she approached and asked about going from full-time to half-time to be a mother, your wife, and still a teacher. And at that time, none of you were on the board. Jeff, the only one here was a part, not here, was a part of that. And they agreed to that. And I'm here representing her to say thank you for that. It was wonderful for her, wonderful for our family. We went back through history and it ended up turning out five full-time teachers that went through working with her at halftime, whether it was getting their start or stepping back from full-time, as they also had children and then coming back to full-time in a different role. And even other teachers, teachers that started here but maybe are working in other districts, there was two additional. So seven different teachers were, of course, at that time, that essentially had to work with her that I ran and someone that I feel was a great teacher and a great person. And we learned quickly, it's not truly 50%, and that's okay. It never is, as you all know, in your own profession, it's never a percentage. But I just wanted to say thank you, as then I was a public member supporting my wife her approaching the board. In this moment, I'm doing the same thing, saying thank you for that decision at that time and potentially in the future, whatever comes up. Keep in mind that was a real positive situation, I think, in all fronts. On the wild ways, and I think her administrators, the previous Minister Wordington and then Mr. Moosbaum and Mrs. Clay currently would say it was very positive. In the marriage of two people doing that, but we're excited as well if approved of it. She's able to serve full-time. Yeah, just with her passion and that, we'll do this as long as we can, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. All right, next up is highlight on youth, and we have the gifted and talented programming by Autumn Gilmeier.
All right, now the other hand back on. So Autumn is presenting about gifted and talented, which I oversee and work with. And a little bit of history on that, where it's evolved to where Autumn is solely committed to this, an employee. And she's a very good, passionate artist, and that reflects in her other time as well. But she's a trained school counselor, which made this even better when she stepped in this role. She's now in year two. Four years ago, five years ago when it began here, we had a person that was trying to fulfill GT along with basically full-time and some other roles at the high school. He was trying his best and just he couldn't give what it deserved. And then we switched to Susan Sankey three years ago, and she did a tremendous job, but she was also 50% in the virtual world. And it was hard to work both there as well, and she was able to go full-time in the virtual world support our academy there. And Autumn was looking to change roles a little bit. She stepped in. And what she's done in two years has been outstanding. And being able to solely give that time from fourth grade through eighth grade, we've worked together in some different ways to bolster, but it's really been on and what she's done in here. Tonight, she's more to speak to, what she's added this year. And I'll briefly introduce it, but there's five gifted and talented areas you can expand to. With her being part-time, we're serving only two and probably the most important two, of course, I think gifted and talented and the academic abilities. But we've expanded into three this year, and she's going to extend that tonight. And if it's her passion, it also fits another one of those areas in the team. So, Autumn, can you?
Yeah, I think there is a new slideshow. I don't know who runs that, but the slideshow is linked to the agenda.
Got it. I can. Give me a second.
How long have you worked for a district?
This is my fifth year.
Fifth, okay.
Yeah.
I got it. Also, you have the advantage of that is, along with being gifted and talented, sometimes comes a struggle socially, knowing how to handle those abilities that assume might have. For instance, my first year teaching, I was teaching a 10th grade elder too. And I have a sixth grade girl in my class. She walked over from the elementary school. Our counseling team was working with her because she would be at recess and maybe her friends would say, hey, look at those pretty fluffy clouds, and you would name them and instead talk about the rain clouds, right? She was intelligent and to the point where she would, she couldn't just have fun necessarily look at through that social. So she struggled socially, and that's pretty common. So having a school counselor that is trained in being able to work with groups and work through those types of things added a great dimension to this gifted and talented position versus just focusing on math or ELLA ability. She can bring me next and get anything. Now, we have this stuff, I'm not going that way, but it's just, it's been really unique and outstanding.
Hello, everyone. I'm Autumn. I'm the gifted and talented teacher for grades four through eighth grade SEC. And I just wanted to swing by to kind of introduce the newest addition to our programs Nick kind of alluded to. So for a little background, as you had mentioned, there's five defined areas of giftedness, general intellectual, specific academic, creative thinking, leadership, and then visual or performing arts. And then in front of there, I kind of have the classes that we are currently offering to serve those gifted areas. Next slide. And then for the identification process for these new art classes we just added to our GT program, it's a little bit different, right? Because we don't have a standardized test or way to identify advanced artistic ability per se. So what we did is we leaned on our art department and trusted their professional judgment to help identify students who displayed advanced artistic abilities compared to their age group peers. So, so far, we've identified six sixth grade students, what is that, eighteen seventh grade students? And then nine eighth grade students, which is pretty consistent, thank you, with the with the numbers of our other like math reading kids, about that top five percent or so of those populations. Next slide. And then just a little bit of what we are working on so far in Art GT. And I should mention, we need once a week per grade level. And so we're addressing perfectionism in art-making, which is kind of a constant struggle with gifted kids across the board, no matter what topics. Developing their art style and identity. And then they've so far participated in a couple of art competitions. There was a Wisconsin DOT aviation art contest, Super Bowl, and then they just did the doodle for Google contest that they do annually. Our final project that we're all working on is a classroom mural in the MVP room in the middle school. So you have to stop by the end of the year to see what they have done. And then our overall goals for the program are to challenge their artistic abilities, strengthen their talents, and more importantly, build their confidence as young artists. So if you scroll, I think the last couple of slides are just a couple of their doodles for Google. And that one in the middle there, that's our student Ellis Peterson, who just won the drug competition, like the drug calendar poster competition this year. Pretty good. And then there's one more slide. Yeah, this is the examples. That's all I have. Are there any questions about this?
Holds the gala one.
The gala that won, she didn't win the Google one that we know of yet, maybe she will, I hope. But the drug poster, she is in seventh grade, I believe. I'm afraid she's got a twin sister and she's artsy too. So, yeah. It's been really fun so far, super enjoyable for me personally and professionally, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. All right. So next up, our comments by board members and superintendent. Central Syncret Chamber Dinner was Monday, February 27th. Tim and I went along with Shelley, Jackie, Nick, and one more. Anyways, we went to the chamber. What else? Why can't we think?
That's not, yeah.
Yeah. Where's our award?
Yeah, it's over there. Yeah, there's different categories of businesses. So we were voted, they vote, community votes, I guess, and we were voted best in that category, which was service, I believe.
We were just gonna say school.
We beat our, yeah, that's school. Actually, we beat out a couple of churches, so.
There were churches for service?
Yeah.
It was a, it was a full room and
Yeah, it's good. Good reminder that we want to be more involved in the chamber. So they were looking for board members, so I volunteered to be on the chamber board. Haven't had a meeting or anything yet, but I thought that would be good just to have that partnership.
And then I went to the WASB School Law Conference, and that was on February 23rd. And a lot of good information. It was a full-day thing. It was common questions regarding administrative leave during workplace. It just answered a lot of questions that I had, being that we started during COVID, there wasn't a whole lot of trainings for us. So some of this was, like, I wish I would have had that like a year or two ago. Non-renewal bulletin, what else was there? It was rules of order for a school board meeting, which is good for me to know. Open law sessions as well. It was during a snowstorm, so there was probably 10% of the people that signed up to go, but the presenters were still there and we still got the information. So got a lot of good resources and knowledge now, so. Very worthwhile. I'd go again and encourage everybody else to go if time allows, so.
And also, kind of to piggyback on that, when you guys were at the January conference in Milwaukee, you'd ask questions about the safety drill reports and such. So I got clarification on that. There is a requirement with Department of Justice for an active threat report on their website, an annual report, so. To answer that question, thanks for, yeah, bringing that to our attention.
It's one of those, I don't know if we were sure.
Right, yeah. Yeah, a lot of people there were like, they had never even heard of it, like us. Yeah, good.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight, scheduled presentation by guests and staff members. First up is the referendum update. World Architects and Engineers and Market and Johnson, Eric is here.
I think Maria's on as well.
Is that Maria?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, there's Maria.
Hi, Maria.
Everybody. My name, Jen Erica says bold, and I couldn't figure out how to change it, but.
That's all right. We figured it out.
We got it, yeah.
All right, good evening, or good evening, board members. I'm here to touch on updated budget for the referendum, and then I'll touch on phasing for the high school schedules here as we get closer to the spring. Give you guys an idea of what to look forward towards come May 1st. I passed out some handouts here, you should have those in front of you. We can start right here on the front page. You guys have seen this before. Referendum cost breakdown, buy building, so the master budget sheet, we can focus on that right column dated 3/22. Go through it quickly, but starting at the top, elementary school, it's labeled as GMP number one, so we are in for an executed guaranteed maximum price. So that is a fully accounted for cost for the elementary school. We have subcontractors on board contracted, some middles have started. So we're ready to start construction on the elementary school. The middle school, we've gone through the first round of budgeting, 50% CD budget. That happened last month. Bid day for that is this coming Friday, the 24th, at 2:00. Once that happens, then we'll have a final idea of where the referendum college will go to for the construction portion of that. So that is, that's a big milestone as far as cost for the referendum. Moving down to high school, last month, it was about four hours post-bid. I think I touched high level. We were right on budget, if not slightly under. Over the last month, we've performed scope reviews of all the bidders, 43 work categories. Ultimately getting to our proposed guaranteed maximum price of $20,149,511. We're moving forward with that. With that being said, we have given some notices perceived to some of the bigger work categories, pre-cast, HBC, electrical, some of the long lead items, so we continue to meet our schedule. And with that being said, over the next week, we'll have fully executed contracts. They're all contractors, vendors, et cetera, through that project. And you want to touch high level as far as scope, we did on the bid form break out several alternates just for contingencies, so to speak. Making sure that we could be on budget. Like I said last month, we were very happy with the numbers. Touching on the alternates really quick, at least the ones that are ads at this point. So alternate number two was the home bleachers. That was an ad at this point that's not included in that dollar mo. I just want to clarify that does include visitor bleachers, new press box, and then a modification to the home side, which is approximately another 80 seats. And then alternate six was an ad alternate to have the track blue and a little black. And then alternate seven was to put a pad, shock pads or whatever, which happy to report that those did make it into that GMP amount, although they're currently in scope. Moving down, professional services, those are locked-in costs, that would be old design fees. And then any prereq design items such as geotechnical engineering, boring surveys, those have already happened, so we're just tracking the cost accordingly there. Last but not least, the owner items will actively be tracking this monthly between myself, Jen, Tim, Erica here. Obviously, we have our buckets of money, we'll work within those constraints. Over the next couple of months, my intent is to really have those isolated in to see if there is potential savings there as well. Focusing on the bottom, probably the most important thing. If we look at the total budget as it sits today. Left column right now, again, not 100% certain where the middle school land, but right now we're tracking to be about 288,000 under budget, very good place to be in my mind. With that being said, being under, having $300,000 left to spend, we're currently working on alternates, options that we can use or select here in the future and spend that savings. And some of those would be, the current alternate two would be the home bleachers. And then a couple others we've discussed internally would be the secondary road access into the site. Greg has mentioned a few maintenance items that would fall within the referendum resolution, all within that vote. So we'll be tracking that very closely here over the next few months. And then ultimately touching on the contingencies. If you look at the contingency line items in the elementary school, middle school, and high school, right now, the total is right around 1.2 million. My intent is come September, October, once we're out of the ground at the high school, we have the parking lot in and the track and field. The risky, unpristine items are past us, and I think at that time, you can make a decision to reduce that by whatever dollar amount we feel. So there could be some potential savings there that we can reallocate to some of those alternates I mentioned. Any questions on the budget update at this point before I jump into the schedule? All right, if you guys can turn the pages too, I'll start with the high school. Obviously, that is a big project, starting with a phasing plan, just so you guys can get a sense on how we're planning on constructing this. I tried to color code this, starting with the colors up on top of the page, you can see where the track field, the same upgrades are. The intent is to break down, or excuse me, break ground, May 1st, give or take. We'll get in there as soon as possible. That's my best guess right on May 1st. And then finishing that up on August 20th, I believe, first home football game is August 25th. So obviously have everything ready to go for that game. Next, it'd be phase two, that would be the parking lot in the virtual school. Obviously, we can't start ripping apart the parking lot until school session is out. So June 5th is our anticipated date to start ripping up the playground. The intent is to have that turned over for school start, or I should say, August 20th. We need to have that ready for the first football game. And then with that, the orange section, which would be the virtual school off the backside of the auditorium, the goal is to have that in enclosed, all the finishes completes, ready for the 2023 school year. So that's a that's a reasonable goal, and we're pushing to have that done. Which remains, we're going to start putting footings in this summer, but the rest of the scope, the big additions, the the shop areas, and then the science wing in green, that'll go from roughly June 5th through the faller up to August 25th or 24th, so ready for the school year of fall of '24. Majority of the scope, obviously. And then with that, last but not least, would be any interior revisions that we're making, which would happen the summer of, the summer of '24. Any questions on phasing right now?
I just have one, and not to be a stickler, but you used the word goal for phase one and two. Are those timelines aggressive enough to where if you start seeing a week delay or a few days delay that it starts kicking it out, or is it a comfortable timeline to get it done by the 20?
I'm feeling very comfortable. It was nice that for the track and field events, there's nothing happening in the spring. So being able to start May 1st, maybe even earlier, depending on what happens with the frost and everything. Having a full, essentially, four months to get that in, that is, I would say, a conservative schedule. So no concerns there. The addition, the virtual school is roughly 4,000 square feet. Stud walls break the sod, so that shouldn't be an issue. And I guess I should have not said goal, I'm trying to make you guys nervous. Any other questions?
Are the timelines in alignment with, like, community use of facilities?
Which timeline, like?
Like the starts on 6/5, right, so the Monday after.
Yeah, so we've had a discussion, like, especially the parking lot from, you know, being tore up, we've got to have access to the building every day. So that was one big concern. It's ours access to the building, right? Is that what you mean? Because the building itself is. Maybe I can. So, yeah, so it will be available for use. Parking will be a challenge.
And I guess I'll just add to what you said, Tim, right? Parking will be a challenge, but we're working on a site logistics plan. Obviously, we've had access to the community schedule, all the, the building is essentially in full use over the course of the summer. So we're just making sure that access is always there for any, any individuals looking to use the facilities. And then the big focus will be signage, just making sure things are labeled correctly as that as the pathways and the access will change probably daily, is based on how we have to phase through the parking lot to make that happen.
All right.
We're taking those.
Like, yeah, a big activity, like, well, that's probably the big activities would be the dance. So we might have to problem solve something with parking off-site and shuttling. Maybe, you know, something creative like that. Yeah.
And then the heart walk, right?
Um, I'm not sure. It typically is, yeah, like the week right after, yeah. I'm not sure about that. I'll definitely have to check on that.
And like you said, Tim, right, we're finalizing the site logistics plan at high level. Kind of the thought that's crossing our minds right now is, there's a lot of green space on the north side of the track right now. Creating some sort of kind of protecting block, you pull the large quantity cars, would be on the green space, of course, but just one potential idea that we're looking at. Any other questions on phasing? All right, if we can go to the next page, I'll touch on the schedules themselves. There's a lot of information here. This is actually the master construction template for the high school, elementary school, and middle school respectively. So I'll just focus on the milestones right now. If you got any detailed questions, please let me know. For the high school, this corresponds just with the phasing plan that we just looked at. Starting phase two, the parking lot, then distance learning, the virtual school, and the stadium. As soon as school's out, we can have access to rip that up. That'll happen 6/5 through 8/20, 8/25. Ready for the school year, fall of '23, and then for the first home football game. We move down, phase one is the stadium, and that is, like I said, is going to get in there and start ripping that up as soon as possible. Right now, I'm anticipating May 1st. If we have a nice spring, it could be a lot sooner than that. Early, middle of April, which is just more contingency days in the schedule. If we go to the next page, high school schedule continues. Phase three would be additions and renovations, and that's the bulk of the buildings, roughly 30,000 square feet between the two sections. We're going to get the parking lot going as soon as that's ripped up and demoed, and we'll get started right away on putting in the footings, foundations. I guess a milestone, just to note, is pre-cast. Right now, we're looking to have that installed August 25th, give or take. And then we'd like to have those two areas enclosed, weatherproof by the first of the year 2024. And then obviously, all the MEPs, finishers happen after that. So as far as weather tight, that's, that's the milestone goal right now. And then the renovations, remodels, the new home ec area, the school store, the areas that we're going to be remodeling, that'll happen in the school or the summer of '24, spelled out there. Any high-level questions on high school right now? Now, we'll jump ahead, elementary school is plugged in. Right now, we're doing the preliminary work over there, getting ready for gas main relocation and relocation of the current transformer location. Right now slated for the end of April, it'll be a Saturday, Sunday activity. This could make it work with no school days. Which Saturday into Sunday are a very good way to support that stuff down. Once that's done, we will go right into breaking ground. Right now slated for May 1st. Again, if we can start earlier than that, we will. My best guess for, for frost out, a little bit of moisture out of the ground. As far as the schedule itself, it's spelled out there. I'm just focusing on substantial completion. Excuse me, substantial completion shooting for August 7th. Giving, giving you guys the school district some time to move in furniture, just get things situated for school start fall of '23. Any questions on the elementary school? All right, last but not, we get to talking about middle school real quick. Again, this is getting out on Friday. That is a big milestone, and we'll ask some final costs from contractors, we'll lock that in with GMP, then our budget is set for construction. With that being said, this could be a two-phase project. This summer, we'll get the electrical work completed. Providing a generator backup, we'll supply backup power to the refrigerator, some boilers, a couple mechanical units in a in a batter room. So that'll happen, minor work this summer. The vault of it will happen the summer of '24. And we did it this way, just for the times of units right now. Want to make sure everything is there. So when we rip everything apart, we have everything we need to put it in, put the ceilings back up and have it ready for fall of '24. No, it's high level, I went through that quickly, but any questions on the middle school or the elementary school or?
We've got this.
We're focused, uh. The more we work, like, so we're gonna do the parking lot first, and then we're gonna have all that heavy equipment coming back across. Is that just like ending the whole project that everything kicks in after we walk through and do a punch list and?
Yeah, ultimately, we'll, we'll punch it out the, uh, the fall of twenty twenty four. Uh, but it's a good point, um, precast is coming in, and that would be on the new parking lot, so the plan right now is to only do the wear force or the base course according. We in some areas, and then once the heavy materials are in and out, then we'll put the wear force and make it nice and pretty. Great market. Any other questions? Uh, Maria, anything else to add on your end?
I think you summarized it well, Eric, unless there's other questions. Or me?
Good, thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you all.
Alright, next on the agenda is the introduction of the twenty twenty three bringing election school board candidates, they have Lance Langston. Angela Deep and Derek Miller.
Alright, hello, um, I'm Mike Rossid, um, running for school board in this room. Um, moved, uh, my family and I, three kids, um, Molly Shane Griffin, or fifth grade, second grade, kindergarten now, uh, two years ago. Kids are, are absolutely loving the district, enjoying their times, um. I grew up in, uh, Leva, Wisconsin, uh, spent some time in northern Minnesota, and went cities for college. But most of my professional career in medical device, uh, manufacturing and sales. Uh, a couple reasons, I guess, why I didn't want to do this, uh, so having come to the community, uh, I feel like I engaged, you know. Tim and, and Erica and some of the other school administrators quickly, and Jeff Redman, and, you know. My grandfather instilled early in kind of all of us that, you know, if you have the ability to serve, you should, at some point, I think everybody should. Serve their community, and I feel like I had the opportunity to do so now, and with kids in the district, uh, there's some personal investment there as well, to wanna see if you can even to improve. But a lot of the things I've seen that the strength of the community reminds me of home a little bit, um, and I, I think. The more tight knit and, and involved, everybody is, the better the output, uh, overall for the district. Um, leadership wise, most of my professional career has been in, like I said, either project management or, or managing, um. Various levels of, of sales teams, um, so with the professional experience, um, I think I've definitely learned over the years that. You know, actively listening and, and. Not, uh, not emotionally involving feelings per se in negotiations is, is definitely a learned skill. Um, and I think I've put a lot of time into that to where I, I hope to be effective, uh, if elected on the board and, and engaging through. Some of those difficult conversations that I know will all come up at some point, uh, or another. Um, fundamentally, uh, just a couple of core beliefs that I just wanted to share, you know, why I, I think, especially with the referendum going on, we talk about. Kind of the fiscal responsibility and transparency, I know when, uh, things feel goofy, it, it just, it doesn't leave everybody feeling warmly welcome, I know. We've done a good job of that so far, and in presentations I've had tonight, um, I, I do think that that's a very important part of, of keeping the community engaged and. Wanting to work with the district. The other part, um, for me, just as a core belief, I, I feel like schools should hold responsibility for, for ensuring kids are ready to go, you know, I. Lot of stuff in the news and whatnot about, you know, tax preparation, some of the life skills that have, have kind of gotten overlooked, or, or at least that people feel they've gotten overlooked. Um, and so part of, part of that is definitely something that I've wanted to engage, you know, more with and tech ads and all that fun stuff, so. Um, strengths of SEC, um, and from, from what I've seen here, definitely the, I, I think your educators are, are great, I don't know how many people have. Heard it outside of this room, but, you know, the fact that, that SEC has set the standard for their teachers to be great, not good. Uh, I think it's lost in, in the world a lot today, but sometimes average feels okay, but you end up with average results. Um, and if anyone is able to come into the room and then see the continued progress, uh, on the district report card. Uh, I think it shows that those efforts are definitely moving in the right direction. What I think needs to be addressed, the other one, obviously with the, the passing of, of the referendum, um, in the last year, speaking with Jeff. Understanding some of the success that the board and the district has had with properly managing debts. Has, has been successful, obviously, when we bring on additional spending and debt itself, that'll become challenging as well as. Uh, we learned at the, the school board conference, St. Chris Central is one of two counties in the state that's growing. Um, and, and with the success of the school district, I expect the community to have to grow, and so taking a proactive approach on some of those debt liabilities. Keep us agile to, to make any adjustments in the future as needed. Um, so in closing, I think I, I developed a, a very deep respect and appreciation for the community as a whole, um, you know, working with all of you on the school board. Uh, for the last three months now, uh, has been enjoyable, like the opportunity to, to continue to do that, so. Thank you much.
Thanks, Cam.
Thank you.
Mary, Angie, welcome.
Good evening, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, um, my name is Angela Deep, I grew up in Roberts, Wisconsin. Um, I attended St. Craig Central Schools, and I'm a nineteen ninety six graduate. Um, after high school, I moved, you know, briefly, just, um, going to college, um, earning some associate's degrees, a bachelor's degree, and then. Um, just lived in different areas of Wisconsin, um, my husband Andrew and I, um, moved back here and. Remember, my daughter was in first grade, um, anyway, we have three children, I have a sixth grader, um, Evangeline. A third grader, Elsafina, and a kindergartner, um, Emma Lynn. Um, my kids, um, do participate in various sports activities, um, softball, volleyball, et cetera, um, I've been a part of the volleyball rec. Um, program for the past three years, um. I am an information technology manager, um, with over twenty six years of experience in information technology. Um, and then I lead a team of desktop, desktop support technicians, something like that, um. And why I decided to run for school board is I agree with, and, um, hearing from our community members and district staff. Um, you know, that will lead to a healthy discussions and incorporating, um, new ideas with our currently, you know, with their current agenda. Um, the future of our children's education is a priority for me, um, and I want to ensure that, um, you know, students are receiving the proper tools. Um, to be successful in their students' career development. Um, yeah, I mean, leadership experiences, um, obviously, and I have, um. I'm an information technology manager, um, and then I've had, um, other leadership responsibilities throughout my, um, one year career. Um, I wanna be working alongside, um, oh, sorry, let's skip around here, um, the future of our children's education also is a priority for me. And I want to ensure that they're receiving the proper tools, you know, to be successful. Um, do you have, let's see here. Um, what are some of the fundamental, um, core beliefs, um, I believe in being transparent, obviously, as much as you can be. Um, with, and have an open communication with the community members, um, and staff as it applies, um, every student has their own journey, right, and so. Um, their own way of thinking, problem solving, and I believe that incorporating more programs, um, that would focus on more, you know, like trades, construction, et cetera. Life skills, um, and those types of things would be good, I know we do have some of that programming, but. I don't see more. Um, and then again, not every student, you know, may want a Tena, a four-year degree, you know, in a trade school. Um, and one of the strengths I see in SEC, I believe that, you know, we have outstanding teachers and support staff, um, through our schools. You know, my cool, my kids, you know, constantly talk about, you know, how they love their teachers and, um, you know. Just the support that they receive from the school, I also see great pride in the staff, you know, the condition of our buildings and the grounds and everything. Do I have any, what concerns should be addressed, I guess, over the next three to five years, three to five years? Um, I do believe that, you know, sooner than later, um, that we should consider, um, you know. Our growing community, you know, the neighborhood that I live in, we have seen, um, like. I don't know, the seven houses, right, it's go up for sale, and of those, you know, the people that have moved in either from different communities, under South State, et cetera. So our community is constantly growing, um, so we need to consider, you know, regarding buildings, you know, standing, I mean, now we, we are with this referendum and such, but. Um, let's see, what, what skills do you possess? Um, having grown up in the district, I understand the history and the changes, um, the, the district has gone over the years, um. I'm driven, dependable, committed, and forward-thinking, um, I believe that my professional and personal experiences. Um, that I could try to provide input insight, um, through different ones. And then in closing, I feel that my leadership and being forward-thinking would be a great fit, um, I would be proud to serve as a member, and every decision made. Um, should be made with, um, primary considerations, was best for our students, and thank you for the opportunity. Okay, I'm doing.
Right, I have to lower the head, I'm Jared Miller, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight, um. I guess, uh, to start off, probably start off by kind of saying my history, and it all kind of ties together, I was gonna. Right, read you off what I wrote, but I think I'm gonna go a different route, um, my history is I grew up in Spring Valley, Wisconsin, and, um. You know, didn't, didn't always have the same opportunities as everybody else, uh, really had to work for things, ended up having to move in with a wrestling coach. Um, and that ties into the community aspect of where, where I think St. Chris Central is fantastic. Had I not been given the opportunity to move in with him, wouldn't have been able to win a state championship in football, or win a state title in wrestling, uh, individually. Though, though those are just sports, uh. They're really, uh, it's really a big reflection and a really big portion of, of what I took away from growing up. I left, I went to St. Cloud State, um, to wrestle, yeah, on a scholarship, went to St. Cloud State, kind of lost my way a little bit, I still ended up ranked third in the country, but I. Didn't go back that senior year, and I didn't go back because I didn't have that same level of community that we have here. Um, so kind of reversing things back up, um, I met my wife when I was a junior in high school, or I started dating her then, and she's from St. Chris Central, Megan Heimbach's her name. Um, and we stayed together. I mean, hopefully through tonight, but I'm, I've been lucky enough that, uh, she stuck with me, and I used to say to her when we first moved here. I said, this feels like a commuter town, and the reason that I said that was because I had not immersed myself in the community yet, I hadn't. Um, I started volunteering, I, I came back from, uh, college, and I was told by my coach, the guy who. Put, put me up in his house that I had to coach the high school program, and I was twenty one, not ready to be a head coach. Um, and I wasn't exactly in love with the sport anymore, but I did that, and, you know, could still feel all of that community feel down in Spring Valley, came back here. And I went and managed a steel building company out of Ellsworth, um, and I ended up, uh, helping out with the Ellsworth Wrestling Program. And that was great, and it was a ton of fun, but I still hadn't really fully, uh, immersed myself in this community, and then Chris Buckle. Mr. Buckle, uh, called one day and said, we need some help, um, and it was like seventh grade football, and I was like, uh, I mean, what the heck? So I started there, helping with Mr. Buckle a little bit, and Mr. Holzer, and then, um, started in, into the wrestling community, which. Is, you know, fantastic community, and we take anybody and everybody, and we will never quit on you, just so everybody's aware of that, because we need numbers. So, um, got into that, that community here in St. Chris Central. Took a little different flavor of job, um, when Mark and Johnson guys talk, and this is, that's the world I live in every single day, turnarounds, outages. Um, large shutdowns, that's, that's what I plan and work with every day, so construction is, is what I do, I was an iron worker, I poured concrete. Um, and now I'm a strategic account manager, I manage a bunch of, um, oh, I manage our largest accounts in Minnesota, um, and. Make sure that everything's on the up and up, and doesn't seem like I get much sales time as much as I have to, uh, work with our inside team and, and our outside sales reps and things anymore, but, um, so. Just seeing that and listening to what he's saying, and your guys' questions, and I was like, man, we could, we could dig in a lot deeper and ask them, you guys were spot on, though, like, your questions were. Were really, really right, like, hey, there's no plan for this, and there's, I mean, there's gotta be contingency plans and, and things that are, are gonna be. You know, out, out of date, because it's gonna happen, but, sorry, so I got off on a tangent there, but long story short, um, get, got immersed into this community, and, and although it was just. In the beginning, just the wrestling world, um, I've had the opportunity to, to work through different programs with my kids that are now all in school. And they don't really love all the sports in the world, I don't, I was different, I guess, um, I've got a thirteen-year-old daughter that likes wrestling and horses, that's it. I've got, uh, an eleven-year-old daughter that likes gymnastics and likes to pretend she's gonna play volleyball, but isn't that serious about it? I've got a, a ten-year-old daughter that doesn't know what she wants to do as long as she gets to dress up for it. I've got a seven-year-old daughter that is great at every sport and doesn't really care about any of them, and a five-year-old son. And all these guys are coming through this, this district and this community, we've got no plans on leaving, because I think that this is the best community. That I've ever been a part of, and I, I would like to see how I can continue to grow it and, and make things continue to move forward, um. I go to the gym in Hudson, and I hear from people, other administrators that, that are in the Hudson School District, and, and they say. What you guys are doing in St. Chris Central is absolutely fantastic, we wish we could model after that, that, that's the kind of stuff that warms your heart and makes you know that you're a part, you're in the right spot, and. So I'll, I'll put jam in here, but, um, the reason why I wanna be on the school board is one. Uh, cause I don't think that we should be able to have the ability to pick who's gonna make it and what sport at the age of three, I don't think we should have the, the ability to leave a kid behind. Um, cause I know if, if I had been left behind, I, I wouldn't be where I am now, and wouldn't have the ability to, to volunteer and, and, um. Kind of be forefront and help kids, and, you know, look, closing out here, I, I get the opportunity to, to coach the middle school wrestling team, and it's all volunteer work, and this year I was. You know, I'd have to miss a day or two every week, but that's one of the most, uh, enjoyable things I've ever done, I started a wrestling club, that's all. Uh, charity work too, I don't take any pay from it, nobody really knows that except for some of my close friends, but. It's, it's just to give kids the opportunities that they're not gonna get if, if they didn't, if they had to pay for things, or if they. If there wasn't someone that believed, you guys know how it is, if somebody doesn't believe in you, you're, you're not gonna enjoy the opportunity, so. In closing, I, I know I jammed a lot, but, um, in closing, I'd just like to say. I don't think we can leave any kids behind, and I know that we won't as, as a community and as a district, and I wanna ensure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Friends are ready. You're all that, yep, financial reports are next.
Uh, bank account balances as of, uh, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, citizen state bank checking. Nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents, uh, citizen state bank money market. Uh, two million dollars. Two million, thirty thousand, eighty-two dollars and five cents. Citizen state, uh, bank money market fund forty-six, fifty-three dollars, ninety-one cents. Suicide prevention fund, seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Um. What is this one, sorry, the debt service, uh, I think that's what, fund thirty-nine. Hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, fund forty-nine, debt service. Seventeen million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and maybe one cents, for a total fund balance of twenty million. Nine hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents. I'll move to a three one.
Alright, so Vince. Made a motion. And did you second, yeah, second, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries. Alright, so we'll move on to the consideration of the consent agenda. Yeah, so for the curricular modification. Yeah, so for the curricular modification request for students to enroll in full-time, it is three and part-time is nine for the virtual courses. Under E. Do we have a motion? Brian, who's the first? We have second, is there discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. So moving on to administrative reports with Tim, the student enrollment update.
All right, for the month of March, we have one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three students in seats attending in person. We have, um, forty-seven resident, uh, virtual, full-time students, sixty-three resident, virtual, part-time students and two hundred and fifty-two non-resident, uh, virtual charter students. Um, for a total of three hundred and sixty-two students that were serving through our virtual school. And then again, open enrollment, I always like to point out, we have three hundred and eighty students open enrolled in, one hundred and thirty-eight open and rolled out for a net of two hundred and forty-two.
Thank you. Moving on to the key work of our school board, we've got Josh to do the student staff and community recognition.
Yeah, we'd like to recognize the Fusion Hockey Team. The SCC members of that were Ella Asmus, Kendra Fox, Kendra Harmon, Ava Kessler, Peyton Claren, Lacey Knowles, Lauren Lindis, Jasmine Lindis, Jasmine Peterson, Taya Peterson, Kalen Rutten, Kalen Rutten, Kendall Sunbee. Congratulations to our Fusion Girls Hockey Team on another Big Rivers Conference Title. Uh, recognize Kendall Sunbee. Uh, congrats, Kendall, on your selection as Big Rivers Conference Player of the Year in Girls Hockey. Recognizing Elena Hackbarth and Elsa Rubus. Congratulations to Elena and Elsa on being selected to the Middle Border Conference Honorable Mention Team for Girls Basketball. Mason Sullivan and Kayden Frye. Uh, congrats Mason on earning Second Team All-Conference Honors. And Kayden, congrats on honorable mention for the Middle Border All-Conference Basketball Teams. Kendall Sunbee, uh, congrats Kendall on, on not only being selected as a First Team All-State Defensive Player, but also for winning the Molly Engstrom Award as the state's best defender. Recognizing Brendan Sanders, congratulations on your First Team Selection to the Middle Border All-Conference Hockey Team. Recognizing T. Holzer, Noah Neusebaum, Owen Wosley and Parker Shackleton. Congrats on qualifying for the state tournament. Owen, congrats on your, uh, runner-up finish. You should also be proud of your First Team Selection to the Middle Border All-Conference Wrestling Team. Maverick Koz.
Kostrik.
Kostrik. Uh, congrats on your selection to the Second Team All-Conference Middle Border Wrestling Team. Uh, recognizing Jake Behrens, Brock Swenson, Will Sch, uh, Schmidt, Nate Stark and Garrett DeLong. Congratulations on being selected as honorable mention members of the Middle Border All-Conference Wrestling Team. Good.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the core agenda items. Uh, first is registration for the April sixth joint PAC BOC meeting up at CISA eleven in Turtle Lake. Uh, if you want to go, please let.
So Kelly's gonna register tomorrow. Um, Jerry Walters, there's nervous, he's waiting for registration, so. Um, Kelly, can you just run down who you have signed up, um, as of tonight?
Okay, I haven't officially signed anybody up, but, um, I believe the calendar invite, we had Jeff, Erica, um, Dave Bruce was a maybe. And there was one more yes, was it Josh?
I think I had maybe. I wasn't, I was a maybe, yeah.
Yep, it's April sixth.
It's Thursday.
So Vince, Jeff, Erica, Dave, maybe, are you a yes or no? I guess I kinda gotta decide. Okay, Josh?
I'll have to let you know tomorrow.
Okay, and then myself as well, please, Kelly.
Okay, did Dave say yes or no? Sorry.
Dave's a yes. He was, sure, we talked him into it.
Okay, perfect.
And Josh, we'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Can I piggyback on that for this?
Sure.
All right, so, um, I do want to say good luck to all the candidates, um, at that April fourth election. We do have, um, something that you can attend up at CISA or not at CISA, it's actually at the Menominee Middle School. It's presented by WASB. It's for all new school board members. And so that's Wednesday, April nineteenth, seven to nine at the Menominee Middle School. So just kind of pencil that in and it would be a great opportunity. You know, Josh, Vince and I, we entered during COVID times, so there wasn't those opportunities. But I think it, you know, I'm finding now that there are a lot of, um, workshops to go to, you just get so much information and networking and you hear things and you kind of learn more about your role as a board member. Because I don't think you really understand until you're here sitting and what your role is and, um, just all the ins and outs of things. So again, just want to mention, um, April nineteenth, seven to nine at, in Menominee. Just kind of put that in the back burner. And again, good luck to everybody in that April election. So we'll move on to consideration of approval of Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Plan. And it's Jim.
Earlier, Vince read the Treasury Report that it showed that we have fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. And our Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Plan, um, we are past the five-year mark. So we are able to spend those funds at any time. But as a part of setting up that fund, we are required to maintain a capital improvement plan. So that's what you're looking at here. So basically we have, um, flooring, roofing and those types of items that are most likely to come out of our regular budget when they need replacement, because we can't always find them with a referendum. Sometimes we're able to, but sometimes not. So boilers, sidewalks, asphalt, some of those types of things when they're smaller projects that need to be done. The highlighted items are the items that have changed from last year. Most of them are just updated from twenty-two. We didn't end up replacing them yet. So we've added them to be replaced this year. And upgrade, updated the cost as well for those items. On the last page, you can see an estimate of the cost from here. So if we did for this plan, we would have almost a million dollars of items to do this year. Most likely that won't happen, but Greg and I did talk earlier about some flooring needs in the different buildings that we were gonna try to tackle here. And, uh, Jim.
But it's kind of cool to have a plan, but we never have a plan to actually fund enough, I wonder if it doesn't seem like. You, you see a way within the budget that we could actually start putting funds into Fund Forty-Six? It's been fifty-three dollars ever since I've been here, so that's. And I, I understand it would probably be a revolving, but but I, I, I just hate going to a referendum for what seems like just basic maintenance.
So the way a lot of districts fund it is at the end of the year. If, you know, you, you estimate with your budget, your revenues and expenditures. And sometimes you end up with a little bit more in revenue than what you have in expenditures. And so districts will put the money into this Fund Forty-Five by any so that they can build up a balance and, and do some of those larger projects. Um, over the past few years, the board has given me direction instead of doing that, prepay our local retirement benefit as much as possible. So for about the last five years, we've been prepaying that local retirement benefit for staff that have already retired, but we still owe them payments for into, into an HRA or a full three D depending on what their situation is. So as we come now down to the end of that, and obviously we have new staff and hiring each year that are still receiving some of a benefit under that plan. But we might have funds then that we can put into this Fund Forty-Six moving forward.
But is that the only mechanism to not? Because I'm just asking, because it probably costs more than fifty-three dollars in part of any sense to put a plan together if we're not gonna actually put a plan. And so like, I'm just wondering if it is, if there's a metal mechanism to contribute to something like that or if we're not going through their penalty to not have it.
There is no penalty to not have it. We would have to spend the fifty-three dollars on something within our plan. Um, we could budget definitely to put money in there if that was the direction that the board wanted to go. Um, and say, you know, every year we're gonna put a hundred thousand in there, whatever that number is.
Yeah, I was just asking, does it probably cost things more? Keep it in track and it balanced it and go all the way to report on it than it, than it is in there? I was asking if the mechanism long-term is.
The reason why we started it in the first place was because of that five-year timeline. You had to have the funds in there for five years, so we met that. It doesn't matter. We could put a million dollars in there today and take it out the next day for projects.
We just, didn't know, in case we had a windfall, let's at least get the clock ticking, but we've prioritized staff over this. And no, the real needs like safety and functionality roofs that are, you know, failing, of course, we, you know, we include those in the, in the referendum and those needs, you know, like carpet, sidewalks. You know, these are, these are more nice to have, the majority of these things. Of course, boilers and stuff in twenty years will need to be replaced. But the things that we push back, like some carpeting and stuff, it's not a safety issue. It's not a even necessarily aesthetic thing. I mean, yeah, I mean, this is, Greg lives it every day, so we have to have a plan and say, oh, this sun, this rotation should be nice, but I know, it's always, it's kind of, say, bothered us too, right? It's like, well, why have a plan if you don't fund it? And maybe we're at the point now where at five years. But again, we only have so much money and we've prioritized staff over, you know, carpet.
We're gonna have, um, more parking lots, more building, you know, it's, these functions, the costs are only gonna keep going up.
Yeah, and you don't want to have to go to a referendum. That was the reason for, they started this fund too. Referendum for all, um, routine maintenance things. So if, you know, if that's the case, I mean, that would be a great, maybe even a board committee, um, thing, um, perhaps, you know, to like, all right, these are the things we absolutely want to fund. This is the number, you know, we're gonna need next year and the year after that and.
Could there be like a policy that, like, the thing we're committed to put in one percent, you know?
You could, you just paint yourself in a corner with a policy though. You know, when we have a biennial budget, that every two years, things change. Yeah, yeah, funds, how you write, yeah.
Right, like not a percent, right? Like that way it can be a dollar.
So then we can be fifty-four dollars, like.
Yeah.
Is the benefit of having it that it can become a savings account that doesn't, doesn't count against the district at all?
I think, well, that's.
They created the account so that, like I said, there are a lot of times where it's getting close to the end of the school year and all of a sudden we start getting money in for grants or different things that we maybe weren't expecting. And you can't just turn around and spend that money on something right away. But this was a way where when you put those funds into the Fund Forty-Six, it's considered spent then at the state level. So it, it helps you with your state aid and all of those types of things. Yeah.
So, so is that the only, is that the only way that we can do that?
No, we can put a certain amount of money from our budget if we want to.
No, I mean to carry it from year to year. So this Forty-Six, is that the only hack it does on to, to something like that?
Right, yes, yes, it is.
For that purpose.
Yes. So I do need a motion on that.
That's a requirement of Fund Forty-Six, just to review this annually.
I make a motion to, uh, plan that, or to approve the Fund Forty-Six plan, second.
So Vince first, Ryan second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks Greg for identifying all those. Yeah, can we, yeah, just get a nice round number? I didn't stumble over that fifty-four dollars and thirty.
You got that covered.
We change it, but I throw you off. It was fifty-two.
All right, we'll move on to the consideration of approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four CISA Shared Services Contract.
Yes, please.
So we are renewing everything that we had last year. Um, some of the prices, if you look at the document labeled Exhibit Thirteen C at the top, some of the costs have increased. Um, the, the top three items, the administration, cooperative bidding and the delivery services are required services. Um, you can see the administration is going up almost twelve percent. Um, the co-op is four percent and three and a half percent. So most of the increases we're seeing is in that required area. Um, one other thing to note is the district level consulting services that is decreasing about sixty-five percent, but that's because last year we had three days and this year we're only doing one day. Otherwise, most of the items stayed relatively close to the same. The Science, Math and Technology Resource Center, they changed the way they, they do their free structure so that this go down slightly as well. But overall, we're looking at less than a one percent increase. So about fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars last year or this year, and then this coming year, about fifty-five thousand, eight hundred. Any questions on that?
Brian first, second. Any discussion or question? All right, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, for now, we'll move on to the consideration of approval of the second readings of our board policies. Uh, the second readings are letters D through K.
Should I sign this CISA contract? Don't let me forget.
Okay. All right. So Dave, motion, someone second?
I seconded you reading all.
Yeah.
I read them already at home.
Yeah, I seconded them.
All right, so second is Brian. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. All right, so then we'll move on to consideration of the first readings for the board policies and that's letter, uh, L through S. To slate.
Motion to slate them.
Slate the letters. Okay, so Lance made a motion.
You can just read it like everyone else is.
Made a motion, anyone to second? So Josh, second. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Of what? Second? And open off the proof, second.
Consideration.
Sorry, I was, I was distracted.
All right, well, it says consideration, so that was just practice.
And just in FYI, we had some other three sixties in there, stuff and, and how, um, the policy regarding objection. A policy regarding objection to um books or library materials, right, is kind of a thing now, so just uh we we. Kelly, I told Kelly, let's pull them from this one and get them vetted up just a little bit more. Um, it just, when the lawyer got back to us, there wasn't enough time the last five days here. Um, so we want to get them right, because there are some groups going around, and that's kind of a thing, even a couple locally. Um, coming in and, you know, how they object and stuff, when we have a policy, but we want this new one, if we're going to. Get it approved here in the next couple of months to be perfect, so just FYI, those. I, you know, we we really want to vet um because, like I said, they're they're kind of a hot topic right now. A potential thing where folks could come to the board, and we want to make sure all are ducks in a row. So I want to give heads up on that.
Yeah.
So well, that's the consideration, they aren't even on.
No, 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 they'll be, they'll be first readings next one.
All right, but we do have to vote on consideration of approval of eliminating the board policy for a field trip.
Before we do that, there's item L, the laude system, would that go into affect those graduations this year?
No, it was correct, start next fall.
Yeah, there's probably going to be a lot of questions on that.
Yeah. And uh, yeah, there was, I mean, there's, there's, the majority of our area schools are laude, and there was a superintendent text chain going around asking, and I think there were two of us that weren't. But we're considering it in the process, so, you know, and then um there is going to be an add to uh that one. Um, uh, we have to define, and I, we have it, we just have to get it in there, um, it came up Tuesday at our admin meeting. Um, define how the Wisconsin Excellence Scholarship is chosen, right? We still, you know, it used to be the valedictorian, one person has to get that. And for the technical excellence one, for the technical school one, we have two. So that will be added uh next time for the second reading, just FYI, and I'll, I'll, I'll point that out to part that's added next month. It's like the fifth tiebreaker.
All right. So we do need a motion to eliminate board policy for the field trip, four hundred and twenty-one second.
Well, give this another shot, yeah, now that it matters. I move to approve eliminating board policies. Four hundred point one five five field trip policy.
Right.
Second.
All right, so Lance first, Vince second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose?
Oh, Lance just eliminated all field trips, that's what you did.
Let's get his email on this.
For the record, that was a joke.
Because we put a new one into place, so, right? So when we put a new one into place, we have to get rid of the old one, so that's what. Okay, so we'll move on to possible future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? All right, hearing none, we'll move to important upcoming dates, we've got April sixth. Uh, what we talked about was the joint PAC B O C meeting at six-thirty at CISA in Turtle Lake. April nineteenth is our school board meeting at seven here, and April thirtieth is our board development meeting at one. At the St. Kreis Central School District Office.
What was the date of the new school board members?
Nineteenth?
The nineteenth of April.
Seven, yeah.
Seven to nine.
Probably sure.
So, yeah, so they can, they can't go to the.
Oh, yeah, support meeting, right?
That's a, like.
Yep. Yeah, good.
Can't be two places at once, two. I wonder if that's region four, I mean, there's other regions, it.
Yeah.
They must have just mailed the region.
It might be like a Rice Lake one or.
Right.
Right? So do they get sworn in April nineteenth, or is it the May one?
They take, take the old nineteen from cert.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because he's technically, so it'll start till like April twenty-fifth, I think it is, this is a weird date.
April twenty-fourth.
Fourth.
First official day, yeah.
Kelly, could you make a note, please, to just check on the other uh new school board member gathering up offerings that aren't in region four?
Yes, I will.
I think, yeah, Rice Lake's the closest one, probably.
So anyways, scratch that. Okay, so. All right, um, and then the board development meeting is a Sunday at one here. So also mark that on your calendars, it's from one until, was it eight? If you guys recall. What we set it at?
I think it was eight, yeah.
Put some on focus. All right.
What was the date? What was the date? Oh, there it is, thirtieth?
Yeah.
April thirtieth.
Do you have a time in there?
One to eight.
Okay. All right, yeah, so we'll have, we'll have dinner. And get that out.
Is that, that was a one-day or a two-day thing, right?
Yep, so we decided just one day, knock it out, yep. All right, so that concludes our business.
Move to adjourn.
All right, Lance, motion? Anybody else? Do you want to stay here? Dave to the second, all in favor? All right, oppose? All right, meeting is adjourned.